Evening Nottingham, it's 6:30. Welcome to the Board of Selecting meeting for September 20, 2021. I'd like to open this meeting with pleasure leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, I'd like to commend the Fire Department for putting on a great 9/11 memorial this past, last Saturday, and the Rec. Department for putting on a good show for the Earth Fest. That being said, has everybody had an opportunity to look over the manifest and payroll?
Yep.
Any questions, comments?
Do you guys tally up the lawyer piece? Could they find out like what we're standing right now towards our annual budget for lawyer fees to where we stand? Because knowing that the Planning Board has things that they want to bring in front of the lawyers and if we start talking about the other issue in order to keep us in the line of a budget with them? If we push something off that we don't need to talk about till next year, might be nice. Sam?
I guess something you could just email me or some asking for an answer.
I might be able to pull, if I can get into where I want to get into, I might be able to tell you here in just a minute, but.
Are we good to move on?
Oh yeah, it's just an open comment I wanted to.
Yeah. All right, I'll make the motion the Select Board approve the accounts payable manifest of September 20th, 2021, and the payroll manifest of September 21st, 2021.
A second.
Motion a second, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, minutes from August 23rd and the 30th.
Make a motion we approve the minutes from August 23rd and August 30th.
Second.
Motion a second, all in favor? Unanimous. Reports from signed boards and committees. Budget.
We're not on budget, we're on planning.
Tyler.
Tyler's on budget, we switched.
Right. Planning then?
We have a meeting up this Wednesday, which we're going to go over a couple of things and see where it goes, but nothing really much. Planning Board, again from the last meeting which I emailed all you, was the conversation came up if we decide to discuss road standards, I mean at any time we decide to discuss it, the Planning Board would like to be invited, would like to have input on that discussion. So for our future reference to make sure that we do note, that is something that they're quite out of it.
Okay. Anything else?
Not really.
CIP?
So, haven't met yet, but it's time now to rally the troops for that, we're at that time of year. So I'm going to try to get that scheduled before our next meeting. Get the meeting scheduled, if not held. But what I would like to do, you know, next meeting or the meeting after, is just do a quick review of last year's CIP plan and maybe see if there's anything that we want to add, remove, adjust, whatever, you know, just have, figure out how we want to, what our input is for this year.
Okay. All right. Tyler's not here. Steve, do you have anything for 300th?
There'll be a meeting on the 30th if I, and I believe the 300th is people tonight, yes?
I thought they were coming tonight, aren't they?
Yeah, Steve Walters is on the thing for 7:15.
Yeah, okay. We'll get an update from him. Marston?
Uh, yeah, so we are waiting, working on getting the, completing the well by getting, working with Shea Concrete to get the vault in, which, correct me if I'm saying this wrong, but basically is what the wall goes into. We're working on that. We're also with the funds that we have available to us through, mostly through NYA and the donations and sponsorship and stuff like that, we're getting ready to move forward on the backstops.
Nice.
And we're probably going to secure the pricing for the pipe work and stuff like that for the irrigation and then plan on doing that in the spring. So, moving forward, and I haven't talked to Courtney, I know they started flag football out there, but I haven't heard from her.
What's going on?
Yeah.
And how's the field holding up with the first game?
It's nice. I mean, I did hear mom say that we're going to have to level that out if we're going to use it for stopper.
They're, for flag football, they're using this kind of side field, the backfield, it wasn't really made as a field.
Yep.
It was just flattened and, you know, turned into usable flat space.
Yep.
Staying off the main field until they're comfortable with the grass.
Yep, that's fine.
All right. Town Administration report?
Last meeting, you met with some folks from the School Board Committee on the SAU transition. There's been a couple of visits to the Old Town Hall with contractors, that was a step that we laid out last time.
Yep.
There was, you bumped into one of them, and they brought some folks over this week. The big open question over there is probably going to be how we do the heat, what kind of system and what the options are, and that's where we're exploring those options now. That's probably going to drive a lot of the other decisions and it's probably going to be a big part of the cost, so.
What did you say first, Chris?
What did I say, what?
What was driving the cost, David?
Heat.
Heat, oh, heat. Oh, heat.
The last of the scheduled paving, we keep getting bounced around on the schedule, but that's underway, there, you may see crews on Mitchell or over at the cemetery here early this week. Shaun was able to save some money on that process, we may add a little bit of work at the end of the year here if we can make sure we got all our various contracts and encumbrances and things in order and can get the contractors lined up. He's looking at, picking up a couple of extra things without savings that we might be able to do. Next meeting will give you an update on the Q3 financials and the ARPA funds. Generally, the operating budget's looking pretty good, we've got numbers through the end of August and we're going to be okay on the operating side, no worries there. John, through end of August, we have a legal budget of 55 for the year, we've spent 19. That lags, they're billing, you know, that lags a little bit, that's probably reality through July. And we just have, you know, our August numbers haven't caught up with that yet, but that's the neighborhood we're in.
So we're halfway there?
Yeah, we're halfway there.
Right.
You know, in seven months or whatever. We have the biggest, the biggest piece outstanding is probably the Tweed v. Nottingham case, we're in final stages of, that's probably going to close out before year end and could require the town to pay legal fees, you remember that's the case.
So that comes out of that budget number?
I think, I'm not sure if we can dip into the bank for a judgment like that, if it comes out of a judgment, we may not have to take it out of the operating budget.
Okay.
I'm going to look into that in the interim here, but that's where it would come from if we couldn't, if we had to take it out of the operating budget. Likewise, we're finishing up with the audit, that's going to allow us to nail down the ARPA situation. I think we're probably not going to have a lot of loosey-goosey revenue shortfall money from ARPA, that was one of the, one of the ways you can use ARPA is making up for reduced revenue. Our revenue didn't actually drop.
Right.
That is the most flexible money that's in there for ARPA, you could use it for just about anything, but unfortunately, or fortunately, our revenue didn't drop, so unfortunately, we won't have that kind of flexible money for this year. That's an exercise we'll do for the next four years, but this year, in 2020, revenues held up. I'll give you a little bit more detailed explanation of that next time, but that's how that's looking. And tax rate setting's not far away either, that's, you know, so the audit points to that. And, you know, we close out the final numbers and then we're ready for tax rate setting, which is early next month hopefully, middle of next month. And lastly, our Parks and Rec Director Courtney's getting married on Saturday.
Yay!
Congratulations to Courtney.
Yeah. She'll be around tomorrow and I think she's going to let herself disappear on Wednesday or Thursday, but if you see her, wish her good luck.
And so, just a little bit more on the Rec. Department, I mean, they're kind of stretched really thin right now, right?
Yeah, they're, they have really struggled to hire for the after-school program. The, you know, they often use high school students for some of those roles, but those kids can't get to the elementary school in time, just for the start of the, of the after-school program, because the elementary school kids get out and go right to, right to the after-school program. So that's, that's one challenge that they've dealt with two years ago. And then just hiring anybody's been challenging, you know, we're seeing that everywhere, so.
Yep.
What that's meant is our year-round permanent staff has been filling in up there and, you know, they have to have a certain ratio of people, so.
Yeah.
Connor and Bridgette and Courtney have all been doing time afternoons up there to make sure that we hit our legal ratios. When there are fewer kids, they can, they can leave and go do their usual stuff.
Yep.
It's taxing them because they're, it's not part of their usual routine, but they've kept that.
Well, kudos to them that they're doing what they need to do to, you know.
Yeah, if the program's going to be open, they, you've got to have the bodies to do it.
Could Rec. pitch in to Co-Brown to like pay for the van to drive those employees, students, straight there to fill that gap?
If, if that, you know, you've got to, then you've got to find somebody to do the driving, so you're minus one.
Right.
You know, either way, I don't know how big, I think it's like a 30 or 40-minute hole, I have to ask Courtney for the exact timing details of it. I think they've just, they've, on top of, you know, it's not that appealing, a little way to spend the afternoon for a lot of teenagers, so finding people that want to do it's tricky too.
Yep.
Anything else, Chris?
That's all again.
Okay. After action from last meeting, road standards, SEU transition, Moore's Road, 300th.
Okay, so let's tackle them, road standards.
What'd you like to talk about?
Well, I mean, personally, I still think that we need to, as a board, come up with road standards, especially for new roads that are going to be accepted in the town. That, I think is a priority. I think in, in general, the last ones that we had were, you know, more about, you know, reconstruction and I think we do Shaun a disservice by not providing him guidance, but if the board for some reason doesn't want to tackle that, then I think we at least need to tackle the acceptance of new roads.
As far as maintenance and all that?
As far as acceptance. I'm not talking about the new road, new town roads.
Okay.
Talking about other non-town roads that come forward that want to be accepted. And we've, we have not handled that well in the past and I think we need clear standards. And I know it's a hairy, scary topic, but I think this board ought to have the courage to do it.
Well, if we start talking road standards, we'll put that right off. We have to include that the Planning Board wants to be included.
Fair.
So we just have to, if we even start that conversation, we have to schedule that with them.
That's fair.
As a joint meeting, so we can put that off the table right now until we decide that's going to be.
I'm not saying that we want to decide anything tonight, I'm just saying.
No, but again, I'm just saying too, when we get onto that conversation again, or when we do it, we've got to be ready to make a plan with the Planning Board in order to have a joint meeting with them to go over. And I think because we're joining the Planning Board now, this is going to be more than one joint meeting with the Planning Board to go over such standards.
Well, I think that's fair, and I think we would certainly want input from, from the, input from the Planning Board. At the end of the day, it's the Select Board's decision.
Yep.
So, but I agree that, you know, it would be worth, it would be a good thing to have input.
Tony?
Here's a thought, we could reinstate the standards that we just voted down, but only on the condition that we, you know, adjust them, modify them to, you know, because a lot of the people in the audience then had said that they weren't all bad, you know.
Right. And I know John had pointed out there's eight items that he would like to see removed. Is that correct? Did I quote you?
Yeah, something like that, right.
Removed or modified?
Removed.
So let's reinstate them so that we're not without standards.
No.
But that we have a plan in place to get them adjusted, adapted, fine-tuned, tweaked, whatever you want to call it, so that we can make them work.
So you want them reinstated prior to tweaking it?
Yeah. That way we're not recreating the gap that we were in before we started with road standards, where we had none, because that's kind of where we are now, right back to square one.
Yes, we are. I hear a no idea, John.
Absolutely.
Donna?
I mean, you know, what Tony's saying is logical and smart, I'm okay with not reinstating those, but I'm not okay with not doing anything.
Okay. How about we do this, let's do a compromise. John, you know what we rescinded for, for the standards. If you can come up with what you're, what we should take out of it. Tony, if you could go over it as well, and then the next meeting, we'll come together and we look at both of them and see if there's something that we can start with, between the both of them. Does that sound fair?
I mean, we certainly can, I don't really.
I'm a little hesitant to reinstate a set of standards that we rescinded based on the popular vote of the town.
Right.
But however, I don't want to spend the next 18 months or so trying to come up with standards, because now you're going to add another element here, the Planning Board, and they have their mindset and how they like to see things, and now you're going to be adding more.
Can I just make a comment about the, the vote of the town and the, I forget the words you just used about the majority of the town?
Will of the people?
The will of the people, yeah. That passed by 54% of the vote, 45% of the vote said, "Don't rescind." To me, that's not an overwhelming, you know, vote. There were 600 people who said, "Rescind," but there was 500 and something that said, "Don't rescind." And to me, that's not, you know.
So we're going to.
You can talk about, you know, the 54%, but we also represent the 45%.
We represent the whole community.
Yep.
But however, how I view it as the vote was rescinding that standard and we should honor that, hence why I voted that way. I'm not saying I liked it, but, you know, they voted. I feel that we should honor that.
Well, remember too, a lot of the public discourse against the road standards was that it was meant to be a backdoor attempt to keep the lake roads from being accepted as town roads, which was bunk on its face. And that, and it's moved now, they've been accepted.
Right.
So, there's, there is no, there's no compelling reason to not use those road standards, at least in the interim, until we get community input. We did ask a lot of those people to.
Yes, we did.
Offer suggestions, you know, bring forward their, their requests and their input. You know, John's going to have some ideas for, for what to, you know, what to bring to the table to work on. So that's, that's just why I say just reinstate the standards, but let's commit to fine-tuning them based on everyone's input.
Aren't we kind of putting the cart before the horse? Shouldn't we fine-tune it first and then present it?
No, because I'm just thinking to fill the gap, because right now, once again, we have no standards. And that is not fair to Shaun and the crew.
Go ahead, Chris.
Just to separate what your last sentence, what, the policy that you just rescinded applies to three things. Reconstruction of roads, which is a pretty major thing, it usually, you know, requires a pretty big contractor, big pile of money. Relocation of an existing road, which we don't have any plans to do anything of, or acceptance of a road outside of the Planning Board's process.
But what about the roads that we've already accepted that, what, I think two have been moved?
They were, they were moved before they became public roads, so it doesn't matter.
Okay.
So, we're still going to talk, we absolutely have to have you talk about what guidance to give to our employees on how to take care of what we own, and that's what I wrote to you about today, and that's what we have later on the agenda, is what do you want us to do with those that we are, that are Class V roads? That's a different animal than the road standards that you just rescinded at your last meeting.
So why don't we focus on that, so that way Shaun and his crew has something to go by?
We absolutely need that. You may also decide that you want something for those, those first three, or in particular, an accepted road, because that's a political reality that's going to keep happening.
And that's, that's.
So that's up to you, but.
That's kind of where I'm going.
I just want to make that distinction between, you're going to have to tell us how to maintain what we already own.
Correct, correct.
And you can't get, you can't get away from that one. The other one you can get away from if you choose to.
However. So, so Tony, I completely get where you're coming from. I do think that we have to come up with standards for roads to get accepted, because, let's be honest, some of what we have inherited that we now own is troublesome.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And so, I think this board needs to focus on that.
Yeah. I mean, I would say we need to focus on all of it.
I agree, I agree, but if you prioritize.
But yeah, yeah.
If you prioritize, I think it's, you know, guidance for Shaun and Chris on, you know, how they're going to maintain the roads and the standards for acceptance of new roads.
Yep.
And then, you know, the third is the ongoing reconstruction. I mean, frankly, I think we're lucky that we have Shaun here right now, who has good judgment and experience.
Good. I'd like us to work on something first before we present it to have it approved. I don't want to just go back to reinstating an old standard without tweaking it first. So that's why I was asking, if you come up with something that you, whether that's the old standard, you come up with something, just taking off, look at the both of them and see if we can compromise.
But I think we're mixing apples and oranges, just because I think what we're saying is that, that, that set was for a different case, and what is a priority, I think, is for acceptance of new roads. And they could be two different animals. And, correct me if I'm wrong in my thinking here, but I think the acceptance of new roads might be some of that, but it's a little bit more than tweaking of what those standards are. Am I correct? No?
You lost me there.
I don't know, so, the, if we take the standards that we had for reconstruction, relocation, and tweaking that, is that what is right for acceptance of new roads outside of the Planning Board?
That's up to you, that's, that came from, that was developed with, starting with a state document and your engineers weighed in on it.
Yep.
Our engineers, and presented that to you a year and a half ago or something, and you didn't really, it's kind of an industry standard kind of thing, rather than anything customized to Nottingham, it's not.
Okay, so, so I think what I'm saying poorly is, let's understand what our objective is. What's the objective that we're tackling, right? Is the objective that we want to have clear standards to accept new roads? Or is the objective that we want standards that apply to all roads that we want Shaun and his team to work towards over time? Those are two different things, so it's like, let's be clear in articulating what's the goal that we're trying to achieve.
If you, we're trying to put a standard together for newly accepted roads, okay? They can do the same thing what they did last year, is put in a warrant article to rescind those very same standards, so those roads can get in. That's the risk we run, no matter what we do.
That doesn't mean we shouldn't have them.
No, I, I agree.
Look at Moore's Road, right?
And we have to answer that at some point.
Agreed.
Whether that, whether that's, he goes before the town warrant article again to accept it as is, I mean, that's, that's him, or we somehow come up with some guidance for him to go by. And that's where I would expect Shaun to weigh in on. But, I, and, and, you know, this 18 months that it took for us to come up with these standards, really, you know, pitted board member against board member, board members against residents, you know, I, that's, really, I don't want to see that happen again.
It's why we paid the big bucks.
I get it, I get it, but I think that, you know, the town did vote us to do a job, they expected us to do a job at the same time, so, I mean, I totally get it. But, how can we move forward without reinstating the same standards without tweaking them first? We work on guidance for Shaun and his crew to go by first? Or do we work on something for newly upcoming roads to be accepted?
I think the priority is newly accepted roads.
Okay. I think we need to answer the question about Moore's Road first.
I think that's a, I think that's an important question as well. I think, I think our option there is that we task Shaun with going out and taking a look and provide, and coming back to us with his recommendations of what needs to be there.
Chris? I would support that. I would support that.
He may, he may look for some help from our engineers and.
Yeah.
Tony and John?
I think that's our only option. I mean, somebody had mentioned taking the stipulation off the acceptance, but that was part of a, wrote a warrant article that was accepted, you know, voted in by the town, and we don't have the authority to, you know, after the fact, remove that stipulation from a valid warrant article that passed, passed the vote, so, given that we no longer have road standards, I think that option's the best. We have Shaun go out there, drag out some engineers and, you know, I mean, it's kind of an ad hoc thing, but it's really our only option.
Well, I don't know if anybody here has been down Moore's Road, because you should, because I was just on it this weekend, and there's probably only a couple of spots where they really need the attention to get it to the width that there is.
So that's what.
The rest of the road is pretty wide. I do not see the cost factor of bringing out engineers to fix a problem that's just about widening the section of the road. That's a lot of expenditure you're putting on the town, which I don't think we should spend.
So you just want to accept any, any road that comes.
No, 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 no. I said we should be able to figure it out.
Don't mix, don't mix.
Without having to have engineers come in for, to widen a section of road. If we get engineers and why do we, that's, they're here to design us rebuilding a whole road. That's what they're, they're, they're not there to say, hey, guess what, cut this tree because it's not 16 feet away.
I think Shaun needs to go out, take, come back to us with his assessment, tell us if he thinks he needs engineers for whatever particular reason. We can sit here and speculate all we want.
Of course.
But I think we, again, task Shaun with going out, taking a look, coming back to us with what his recommendation is.
That's his world and his expertise, I wouldn't want to second guess that, and I'm certainly not suggesting that engineers are mandatory in this process. If he feels they're necessary, that's his call. But like you said, if it's, if the road's in relatively good shape and there's only a few pinch points on it, I trust Shaun's judgment in that, that's not for us to second guess.
Why don't we hear from Shaun now, is whether he thinks we need those.
We're going to get to him in a minute, aren't we?
I, I, I don't think, I don't think we should debate whether or not we need engineers now, because we don't know, and I'm assuming Shaun doesn't know, because Shaun has to go out there.
Okay. Then, task Shaun with going out, evaluate that road, if he thinks we needs engineers, come back to the board and we'll decide going from there.
Well, I think he needs to come back to the board either way. Engineers or no engineers, he needs to come back. Engineers or no engineers, he needs to come back to the board with his recommendation.
What Donna said.
Well, remember, this is, we're, we're particularly talking about Moore's Road.
Moore's Road, yes.
Okay, 'cause Mr. Rossberg, right, all, Mr. Rossberg also offered the assistance of helping bringing that road up.
Exactly.
So, we again are not trying to burden him with a huge exponential cost to bring up this one particular road where ten miles of other road that aren't probably as nice as this are totally accepted now as town roads.
So let's work with what we just mentioned, with Sean and the property owner. Evaluate it, come back with the board, advise us what he thinks, and if we need engineers, we'll go from there. Either way, as Donna pointed out, he should come back to the board afterwards. Time is of the essence, though. I really want to get this thing resolved, at least in Moore's Road, and then we can talk about the rest of the, you know, um-
I, I don't see them as sequential. I, I-
I understand that, Donna, but one thing always leads into another, and the next thing you know, we're in January, February, and we still haven't made a decision.
Uh, I think this board has to, has to address the acceptance of new roads, and I don't think it's tied to Moore's Road.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I get what you want. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
No, I, I'm, I'm still unclear there, 'cause, uh, he gets what we want on Moore's Road, but I would like to hear from this board, a yea or anaye on moving forward on committing to developing standards for new road acceptance. I said it before, and people don't like it, but we're, we don't wanna keep getting-
No, I, I'm, I'm, I have no objection for us setting new standards that are, I think, more reasonable than the standards that we previously had in place.
For acceptance of new roads.
For acceptance of new roads. 'Cause you, you can't build a new road and say, hey, it's gonna be accepted under these orders, it's because any new road that's gonna be built has to go through the planning board, and we have standards already set in place.
Talking about additional emergency lanes or whatever that wants to get accepted.
And again, let's make those reasonable. 'Cause we're just putting, with the standards we have now, we just put a big blank statement saying, it ain't never gonna happen.
I just wanna put it on the agenda that we're gonna talk about it and be forward with it.
I'm absolutely forward to it. There's no objection here.
What's on it. I'm just saying, let's-
And again, there's no objection here. I already said that. So, clearly, here we are. We're up to seven o'clock. We're still talking about road standards. Um, and I feel like we're going right back to where we were before, where we're gonna be spending-
Donna, just ask a simple question. Are we ready to bring this up and have a real discussion about it? And I said, yes.
And are you prepared to go eighteen months?
I don't think it's gonna take eighteen months.
I would like to make a motion that the select board commit to coming up with standards for the acceptance of new roads that are outside of the planning board.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? One aye? So would you like that put on the agenda next, next meeting too? Donna?
Yep.
Okay. Chris, if you make note of that, please.
I would hope at the next meeting that we could talk about process and how we're gonna do it, and it might require a working session.
Okay. So we're gonna skip this other and go right into our seven o'clock, uh, hearing. Everybody from the commission here? If you will, please.
Here or over there?
Right there.
Well, it's your hearing, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
It's your hearing, so come on up.
We need more chairs.
Is that clock wrong? You can come with your own name tags, huh? Came with your own name tags. I like that. Yes, they, well, clearly.
Okay. The Nottingham Conservation Commission here is, uh, holding a public hearing pursuant to, uh, New Hampshire RSA 3- A in consideration of expenditures from the Conservation Fund to assist in a conservation easement project identified as P-20-ACT number four, parentheses C, little small c, CE. This property is located, is, uh, is map eighteen, lot nineteen, located at 311 Stage Road. The owners want to put a conservation easement on this property before they move out of town, to make sure that the land is available for farming, uh, which they intended to do when they first got here, and, uh, you know, life got in their way, and, uh, they didn't do as much as they would like to, like to have, and they want, really want somebody to, to farm it. It's, uh, located, there's a drummond, uh, on the field part of the, or the field is on a drummond part, on a drummond. Uh, there's thirty acres, there's two streams that go through, cross the property, and join further east, and eventually flow into the North River.
Yeah, the other thing to mention too is that one of the reasons why the owners want, um, this land to, to be farmed, and Southeast Land Trust, who's working with the owners to put a conservation easement on this, is that this, the soils that are farmed are prime agricultural soils, um, which are actually fairly rare. Um, many of them have been developed to, to maintain that as a farmable piece of property with prime agricultural soils is really pretty critical. And Southeast Land Trust does have a program where they try and match farmers up with their conserved, um, properties when, when they're farmable, and they've been very successful in doing that.
Anyway, the, the Conservation Commission has voted to spend up to $3,000 for half of the appraisal cost, uh, on the property. Southeast Land Trust has gotten a quote from their, uh, an appraiser that can do the job, uh, fairly quickly, of $4,200, which means the, the, uh, once the Conservation Commission would, would pay half of that, which would be $2,100. We were looking for $3,000 just in case there's some overtures. But we're, right now, we're looking at, you know, probably $2,100 for our half of the appraisal, and the owners will pay the other half.
Any questions from the board? Pretty straightforward, yeah.
Yeah.
It's their public hearing.
Yeah, well, I, I want, you know, the input from the select board at this point, if, if they have any questions.
Uh, as John had pointed out, it's pretty straightforward. So I would open it up to the public if they have any questions or comments on this. No? Okay.
Okay, no, here we go. For the comments, I, I guess I can close the public hearing at this point. And turn it back over to the select board.
What was your requested dollar amount?
Well, uh, we were requesting up to $3,000 in case the, it runs over a little bit. Right now, the, the quote that we have is for $4,200, and I think it's a firm quote.
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, the Conservation Commission would pay, or the town, from the Conservation Fund would pay half, and the owners would pay half.
It's the property, right? Okay.
Okay.
So, but, but the three, $3,000 is just in case there's something that-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it gives you a little, little cushion in case something changes.
It runs out a little bit over, and we don't have to come back and have another public hearing.
Uh, so, what do you do with the excess funds if it doesn't, you-
Well, that, that's, it stays in the, in the Conservation Fund. We'd only expend whatever that, that half of that bill is, up to that, up to the $3,000.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the release of up to $3,000 of expenditures from the Conservation Fund to assist in a conservation easement project identified as P-20-ACT number four C, CE.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
There you have it.
You want us, a couple updates, uh?
Do you have a minute or two?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I think, I think we've already, I, uh, I don't know how far you've gotten on this, but, uh, I sent in a recommendation for Mary Colvard to be on the commission. And, and I think there was a request somewhat earlier than that for me to be reappointed to the commission, but I don't know where that stands at this point.
For you, Sam? I'm so sure about that.
I know.
So just, just a reminder to act on those.
Okay. We also wanna recognize, uh, the community volunteer, especially the community volunteers who assisted with the scheduling, equipment maintenance, and sampling of the North and Little, Little Rivers this summer. This, uh, program is sponsored by DES, and it is known as VRAP, Volunteer River Assessment Program. And we've, uh, participated in this, uh, program for a number of years. The, the new community volunteers that we, that came in and volunteered this year, and I think one of them was, uh, you know, had been on last year too, but there are Dallas Huggins, Amanda Cafasso, Cafasso?
Cafasso?
Lori Nickerson, and Merrill Dwyer. And then, uh, Celia Abrams from the Trails Committee, a former commission member was on it, and then there's three of us here.
Thank you for the, to the volunteers that stepped forward this summer to help out with that, that program. And we're always looking for more, so, next year.
Yeah, we, we test every two weeks during the summer. We just finished up, uh, you know, a couple weeks ago.
What do you test for? Water quality and?
Water quality, pH, turbidity.
Dissolved oxygen. Conductivity, which would be salt, salt levels.
And we also check-
Based on last year's too, to make sure that it's still in the-
We've been doing this probably for, I don't know, fifteen years at least.
Yeah. And it's, uh, it's in conjunction with the Lamprey River Watershed Association, and, you know, we, we bought our own equipment a number of years ago, so-
Where do you test on the North River?
Uh, on, uh, Smoke Street. On, on, on North Rivers, McCrelly's and, and, uh, Freeman Hall Road. Little River is, uh, is on, uh, Smoke Street.
Was there any question about maybe testing it when they start lowering Patuckaway to see if, how much that changes?
That's a lake, um, assessment program.
No, I know what they assess with the lake, but I'm just saying, just to, from your normal studies that you have, when they fluctuate all that water out of that lake, if that, would that change it?
They usually drop that down in about October, so-
Yeah, it starts on October 11th this year. Only a couple days away.
The testing program ends in September for the regular river testing. The state runs that program, and they end it in September, so.
Yeah, they, for the, okay.
And I have, um, one other thing. Mr. Chairman, um, we no longer have a representation on the Lamprey River Advisory Committee, and because the woman that we had moved out of town. And I wondered if the select board would be asking the community for a volunteer or three to sit on this board, and it serves as an arm of DES that look at applications to make sure there's not going to, going to be negative impact to, um, our watersheds. We certainly need representation on that.
Any volunteers in the audience?
Yeah, Nottingham really needs to have someone on that board.
So, I mean, Chris, you can post it on the website, right?
Oh, I, thank you.
If you're not on, take, Patuckaway Lake Lovers, then, are you on it?
No.
Send me something, and I'll post it.
Okay. Great, thanks, Donna.
Yeah, if you could just get us a description of, you know, what's the role and, you know, what's the burden, what's the, what's the ask, you know?
That would be good.
Give me something on that.
And, and are you interested in information on the Trails Committee? And all the work and, and enthusiasm from the public-
Yes.
That we had this summer? Celia, do you wanna say a few words? Celia Abrams, she's co-chair of the Trails Committee. You'll have to come up and sit, talking to the mic. Sorry.
I'm Celia Abrams. I live on 72 Case Road, and as Sue said, I'm co-chair of the Trails Committee along with Sam as the other co-chair. And we've focused on four, should I, if you wanna understand what I'm saying. We've, uh, focused on four properties this year for trail work. Um, we did notice a, a marked increase in use of our trails during COVID. There were a lot of people out there. And I also wanna thank Rhoda Capron and the group of her, her friends who go out and walk the trails and gave us great feedback on what was working for them and what wasn't, and that helps us a lot in determining what our priorities are. So the four properties we worked on this year were Marsh Woods, which is just north of the recycling center on Freeman Hall Road. And we put in a bridge there this year, um, with the assistance of the PLIA volunteers. Um, they were great at helping us with that and got a, um, donation of materials from Home Depot to pay for the, the cost of materials. Um, we've also finished the blazing on, on Marsh Woods. We've put up directional signs for the trails, um, you know, identifying the trails and the various locations to, to visit. And we put up a kiosk that was built by Sue's husband and a friend of his. We still need a a formal sign for that, but we have temporary signage there. So that trail is pretty well set to go. Um, on Kennard Forest, which is on Kennard Road, that's a thirty-four acre property that the town owns and put in easement a few years ago with a generous, generous donation from the, the former owner, Ron Kennard. We put up a kiosk there last fall with signage. Again, a Bob Mooney volunteer effort with that. Um, those trails have now all been blazed. The directional signage went up this week, and we have a bridge planned, but not built yet. The trails are still usable, though, without that. The John Trinenco property on Case Road, um, that was blazed last winter. Kiosk was put up this summer with temporary signage. One built, one bridge has been built on that by John Trinenco, and another one is in, in the planning stages and should be put up soon. And that will complete the work on, on that trail for now. And the fourth one that we've been working on with the rec department is, uh, the Marston Farm property. And the Trails Committee flagged that earlier in the year, and there was a great volunteer effort by the community and members of the rec department to prepare that trail work, um, so that they moved, I guess Sean helped with that, and maybe some other town-
It was a tremendous cleanup.
Yeah.
Ben was part of that, were part of that?
There were huge pieces of equipment that had been thrown over the, the riverbank, and, and those were hauled out. So that was a great job. So those are ready to be blazed and signed, and we need a, a little bit of work to, um, keep the, the way across the, um, field mowed, 'cause that grows up to tall grass.
Oh, to get into it.
Pardon?
To get into the trail.
Yeah, it's kind of a disincentive with the tick situation, if people have to walk through the tall grass. But, um, I think we're, as soon as we can get the, the trail blazing ordered, that'll go up pretty quickly.
Nice.
So, any questions about, about that?
No? Any, any questions from the audience on the trail system at all, or?
If you have any feedback on when you use the trails, please, you can email the nottinghamtrails@gmail.com, and please let us know if you've used them and your experience, and if you have recommendations for how we could do a better job. Thanks.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, while you're still here, I'm going to make a motion that the Select Board approve the appointment of Mary Colvard to the Conservation Commission. And also to renew the appointment of Sam Demerit to the Conservation Commission.
Second. Give a motion in a second, all in favor.
Is there an issue?
I just didn't know if you knew end dates off. I don't know, I didn't know if there was a, was anything.
It's usually a three-year.
Three, three-year term.
For both?
Yeah, for both. Yeah.
A term of three years?
For a term of three years.
We'll figure it out.
Actually, ending, because we started so late, it'll probably be end in October, I mean, March of 2024.
That sounds best.
Okay.
That's more likely to line up with your existing.
Yeah, so for a term of three years, ending, all right, so I'll say it again. I'll make a motion that the Select Board approve the appointment of Mary Colvard to the Conservation Commission. And also renew the appointment of Sam Demerit to the Conservation Commission, both for a term of three years, ending in March of 2024.
I'll second that. Give a motion in a second, all in favor. Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
What, what I'd like, one, one announcement to make. I want people to know that archery season for deer is opened. The muzzle loading season will open, I believe, on October 30th and run for 11 days. And then the regular season for the gun season will open November, it's the second Wednesday of November, which I believe is November 10th.
So wear your orange.
Right.
Yeah.
Wear your orange.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. 300th?
How you doing tonight?
Hey, there.
Living the dream.
Don't be so glum.
We could go back and talk about roads. I know, there's long faces on it.
Well, that's taken us 300 years too, Steve.
I know. We probably were talking about it back then.
Hey, where can I get that T-shirt? Is that in the town, in the town hall?
My garage.
I like those T-shirts, I love T-shirts.
Yeah. $20. Yeah, and they have hats too?
Oh, I have the hat.
Yeah.
I have the hat, but I want the T-shirt now.
Which design do you want?
Um, I kind of like.
This one right here?
That one, yeah.
What size?
Well, I'm not going to say that.
Okay. Extra medium. So, what can I tell you? Where do you want to go?
What's the plan?
It's the rabbit hole.
What's the plan?
Well, maybe I can start out by mentioning.
Where are you at on the plan?
Is that, one of the important factors, of course, is to do some advertising. So first thing we're trying to do right now is create a calendar of events. Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Joseph Welch. You haven't been here for a bit with this crap. And so we're making this calendar of all the events that are going to take place during the year and establishing dates to them, which is a little bit tough to do on a lot of events that's going to take place. So what I've been doing is working with Courtney in the last two or three weeks. And she's just started today, she's been a busy lady, in designing a postcard type of presentation that we could use to mail to all the residents in Nottingham. So I'm working with Courtney for that design, the post office for mailing issues, working with the Bedford Copy Center in Raymond for the cost of the, of the material. They're going to, we had actually two thoughts of doing it. One of them was a magnetic type of calendar where one could be laid against the refrigerator. But the cost of that type of document is kind of expensive. A lot of it is expense for the material, but there is a suspense of shipping that magnetic material to us because it's heavy versus just paper. So we're kind of working away from that. What we like to do is a postcard type material. And on both sides, one of them would be, this side will be events on it. The other side would be used for some advertising purposes, maybe just saying Nottingham, tricentennial this year, we have to come up with that. And so we're working that process through right this minute. The one thing that I would like to ask you people, if you can, if we do a mailing, can we use your bulk mailing? Because it saves us a lot of water money, but it will save us some money in the mailing of that. And so what happens is when we do the mailing, we're, there's going to be mailing of 2,161 cards. That's the number of mailing points that, that are in town. And we like to order 2,500 of these calendars. So to be distributed as people request them, as they come in maybe to the town hall or at some of the events that we might be selling things for. And that seems to be the breaking point when it comes to making these calendars. 2,500 lots is what they recommend that we might use. What is the size of it? It's one of these six and a, a little over six inches wide and whatever length that we need for getting all our designs upon it. So that's one of the things that are taking place that we want to do is make sure everybody knows, yes, there is an event and these are the events that are going to take place throughout the year. And then there's a lot of them too.
So would you be sending it out more than once during the year?
Uh, we could, we would.
Probably not though, I mean.
No, the way it's written, it's one year long, it has all the events on it.
It is, yes.
And I wouldn't worry about it not being magnetic. Most people have something they can put on their refrigerator if they want to keep it on their.
They're all filled with magnets. I don't know about one of yours, but.
Yeah.
I have 700 magnets on mine.
Right. We're just trying to keep the cost down to respectable. And we, it's the postcard, the thickness is relatively thick. It's a postcard type of material which is laminated with a material called UV coating. And it gives it a little bit of a gloss to it, a little bit of resistance to moisture if it gets damp.
Okay.
So that's why. Yes.
From last time when Steve was here, we had a, and I looked at it today, I was trying to find it somewhere, but. Yeah, that's, I had that, I left it at my work desk. It was extensively long. I don't think you can put that all on a postcard. So I take it we've narrowed things down off that list.
The list that I have in front of me is about 32 items. I'm not sure what the list you have there is.
It just is the one, Steve, you brought us last time.
Yeah, I think, we, we got them pretty much all on the postcard.
Yeah, you should see, um, Courtney did great a job. It looked pretty good.
And it's not in, it's not in one continuous row, it's actually three or four rows of it. So it's, I don't have a copy of it because she just published it. We'll make, we'll make sure that it's not a cardboard biggie. We want something that's, you know, eight and a half by 11 is a.
I mean, there's a lot of descriptions and stuff on there, so.
Yeah, and that's one thing, John, right?
Yeah.
Okay. We not, we're not going to try to advertise on it, we're just saying the event is going to be bomb day at the Fertile Farm, period. We're not trying to do any event descriptions other than.
So if somebody wants to find more detail, they're going to have to go.
To wherever we have that. They trust you on wheels on. Maybe, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I, I trust you 100%, I'm just saying that, I remember the list being so long, and when I think of postcard, I think six by nine.
Oh, wow, right. It's like the eight font print when it comes out.
Well, I don't need, I mean.
Right. I think what we're looking for, it was something like 11 inches long.
Okay.
And six, and six inches wide. There's an, an issue about the width of it because if we exceed six inches, it becomes a letter cost versus a postcard cost. And then the price would go up, so we have to keep it on the six inches of width. So we'll come up with it, we'll show you if you want to, we.
No, I get, it's, it's more my curiosity, when, when we're talking, I'm visual, you know, to say, okay, this is what, and this is what it's going to look like.
Yeah.
That's all I'm basically.
Yeah.
Cause I was thinking there's a lot of words going to be stuck on something and.
Right.
A real small area, like, how would you see?
Yeah, yeah. There's no doubt we need a bigger list to be posted someplace that's more.
Right.
Easily read, whether it's on the town website, I mean, it'd be great to have a 300 website, but I'm not a web designer, nor do I want to spend money to design a web at this point, but.
Now, what Kelly said about putting everything up?
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, we're going to start off in January, January 8th with the bonfire.
Okay, just wanted to think.
Go ahead.
Tell us if we, the summary of the book that will be.
The program book.
So can I just stop for a minute? Just, so the, the list that we saw last time was, was a pretty big list. And there were some, some estimates, estimated costs that was associated. There were some costs that were still TBD. What I need to see for comfort level, and I don't know if you guys agree with me or not, but it's, I would like to see a list of what events have been confirmed, where they're taking place, what the cost is, and who's responsible for it. And, and part of that is coming from the fact that I know that like fireworks were discussed. And I don't know that we have an agreed upon location for fireworks yet. And, and we have to be able to plan and anticipate, you know, the, the emergency services and all of that. So it would be great if we could see, here's that definitive list that's finalized, here's the final date, here's the final activity, here's the final cost, here's the, you know, the person responsible for it. Am I off base here?
No, that's, that's what we discussed last time.
Well, these will be estimated costs, I mean, it's not final costs.
We're going to need final costs.
Yeah.
We're going to need final.
Cause come, come voting day, that, you know, that will likely be the last contribution to the fund by the voters, you know, that 5,000. And that's going to be your whole budget for the year.
Right.
So you got to make sure that everything that's planned and all of the ancillary costs are within that.
Cause you're also going to be getting close to having to contract for some of this, right?
I would say, yes.
Yeah.
Probably some of them.
I mean, I, I, I don't mean to sound like a jerk and I appreciate all the gut fireworks that you guys are doing and I look forward to all of it, but I just, I think we need something that's a little more concrete about what the actual list is and, you know, like I said, the expenses and who's managing it and all that.
I think the list we had before was kind of an overall brush of it. Now we're, we've defined it in much more detail, so we can take that.
Yeah.
Much more detail and maybe establish some cost to it.
Yeah.
And, and some of the events, even though those events are not events that we're going to be responsible for, they're actually going to be done by the Historical Society or going to be some by the library or.
Is there going to be a point person? So is there somebody that's going to say, okay, I'm doing for the Social Society, I'm doing the point social. That is going to be Rhoda, or that's going to be Joan the Blank, or is that going to be, who is the person that's going to be the person we say, right?
Right, yes.
Make sure you, you're the one we're asking, you've got it all under control. You've got it all taken care of.
And what I would like to see is the, the ones, the events that you guys are driving, separated out from all of those other events. So what's the 300th committee?
Okay.
What are they driving, what are they doing, what's that costing? Who's the individual that's responsible for it?
Yeah.
And we're not trying to burden you guys with more work than you've already done because you've done a great job.
Exactly.
And the list is very awesome with it. It's just for a financial aspect and for the, cause you know, all these events too have to be go, we have to put it in front of the fire department, we have to put for the ambulance service, we have to put everything, as they aren't aware that these events are going on so that the town's safety can be, even if it's a small event where it's 20 people, they need to know that there's something going.
Right.
So that we can have, it's just in the back of their mind if.
The major events, we have invited the safety people already.
And we actually meet.
But they're going to sue, they're going to want to know dates and times so that they.
Jay's on the board of all of them.
Yeah, Jay, we meet at the, we've been meeting at the fire station. And Jay has had all our meetings and he is putting his services available to us and he's aware of every event that's going on as far as the fire department goes.
He, he is, but I mean, we still have to understand.
No, I understand you do, I'm just saying in terms of the safety.
We're also responsible for the expenditure, approval of expenditure from the funds. Right? And so that's why we need to understand the, the numbers.
So. So you want a list with our events separated out?
Yep, please.
Okay, yep, we can do that. And as much of the other, the, what, the date, the cost and the person responsible as we can provide at this point.
Yep. And, and the location, if you could?
Oh, yeah, look, I knew there was one. Where?
Well, I, I, I'll be honest, I mean, I, I think the fireworks was one that was a, a big discussion and I don't know that we.
So I got Atlas Fireworks are going to come out, I was hoping to get them out this, before this meeting tonight, but they were still very busy with fireworks.
Yeah.
He's promised he'll get out to me by mid-October if any of you want to come and meet with him. I don't know if that's in any interest to any of you, to go over possible locations and take his recommendation.
Are we going to go visit the locations with him?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
But if you let it know of a date, you know, I'm sure one of us would try to do our best to.
Okay.
At least so that we can report back to the, the board at our meeting and.
I mean, I'd love to have you guys get more involved.
Yeah, absolutely.
And again, don't, don't, you know, we got a meeting on next Thursday. Love if somebody could show up to it so that maybe we can address some of your issues in a timeframe that might be more conducive to getting things done. I know you guys are busy with some other agendas maybe tonight, so. I don't want to take up all of your time, which I could very easily take up all your time. But yeah, I mean, there's a couple different, and maybe the town pit might be the place to do the fireworks too.
I don't know.
It's not very scenic, it's not attractive, but it's wide open, there's not much possibility of any damage being done.
But what about parking and people location and, and all of that?
Well, that's the beauty of that, there's, should be a ton of parking. Parking down at the pit? No, it was private.
So, well, I guess, I don't know what, what of the, maybe you guys know, I don't know what, like, the criteria for a successful fireworks location. I, I don't know what that is.
Lots of space. A big open area.
It's not really, I mean, I've done a lot of fireworks shows.
Okay.
Been in charge of the Raymond Town Fair fireworks show for the last 12, 15 years. So you do have to have a spot clear of trees, it depends on what size fireworks shells you're putting up, three, four, five, six, eight, 10 shells. Naturally, it depends on your location, how high the shell's got to go up in the air to get good viewing. We might be able to do it down to the school soccer field and have people watch it from the softball field at the school. One possibility.
So like where we had the concert the other night?
Yeah, yeah. Well, it would be more scenic there because you've got the pine trees and if you could.
You know, you can get over 300 something cars there.
Right, right.
Just prove that one.
Right, without any problems. Did you use the other side of the road, the fertile?
Yeah.
Just in front of the gate.
So there, and that was limited very much for the people that were working with the event at the fire station, and there was a little bit of parking out back, but we crammed quite a few, quite a few cars for that in there.
But I don't know if there'd be enough clearance to actually shoot them out between them. Power lines that come out back there in the tree line, so we might be limited, but.
Little bullet, big sky.
Yeah, I mean, I would like a place that was a little more scenic. But the pits, I mean, you could do a, I mean, they could do a hell of a show down there and not have to worry about anything. But it's off the beaten path, it's not a vision of beauty, but once the sun goes down, I guess we really don't care maybe.
So you're going to meet with them and come back to us with their recommendation?
Get ahold of Chris.
Yeah.
Tell you what time the meeting and what time, and if any of you can make it.
Okay.
Come on out, air your concerns. We've got insurance, so it's not really a big deal. We've done some in Raymond and there's been a windshield that got broken. But it's no big deal. Give me your. Give me your information, they pay the claim, they get the car fixed, and it's really not a big deal at all.
I, I, again, I, I hate to sound like a jerk, but I just, I, I think that this board has to weigh in on the final
Mm-hmm.
location for the fireworks, in particular.
Sure.
Once you have your, gathered your information from them about what they think is a good location.
That's why I think it'd be crucial if one of you could come with us.
If, let us know when the date is and.
So then you can say for yourself, love it, or I hate it. And you can go back to the board and say, hey, this is what, um, we looked at. Give your personal opinion.
See, you know, it would be nice to tell everyone, oh, it's happening on Ju- July, I mean, Ju- uh, January 8th, which is the opening ceremony and the bonfire, because that's gonna take place at the gravel pit in Nottingham. We've worked that out with the fire department, the safest place to be. And I say that, it's kind of, if that works out very well, then having the fireworks in the summer would maybe, could follow in the same footsteps if it works out well there, which is gonna be done in, in January 8th, so.
And there's no problem with the fire, bonfire being at the gravel pit?
No, uh, Fire Chief and Public Works Director are on the same page about how to do that.
Okay, okay.
My understanding is the Fire Chief is the point person for the bonfire.
Right, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you got a point person, a location. What's that for bonfire?
There you go. And there's no cost, right?
Right.
No, I mean, I'm.
I, we might have to, are we getting quarter potage maybe?
Yeah, we gotta do things like that.
Yeah. Okay, so that's the kinda stuff, yeah, that we gotta know.
Right. It's like, hopefully, on that particular day, on January 8th, which is kind of the grand opening of the event, is that we have a gigantic bonfire.
Yep.
But maybe some fireworks also that will go along with it. And then we've been looking around to see if we can get one of these, or maybe a couple of these spotlights that would project up into the sky. And we're working on that right now.
That's.
And so we would project these spotlights up in the air, and so for recognition, people as, when driving around town, seeing these spotlights, saying, hey, what's going on? What is over there?
Yep.
And we can, we can say, hey, follow the light for directions and stuff like that.
And when do you anticipate making those kinds of decisions?
Say it one more time.
When do you anticipate?
Tomorrow. Cause we got it.
Thank you.
Jay's working on, he and I are both looking to see if we can find the spotlight.
Nice.
There's something in the wind about Deerfield Fair has them, and maybe we can borrow them from them, but I'm not sure if that's possible or not. Uh, we've been looking online, they're not easy to find.
Okay.
And so everybody who uses that type of spotlight are actually construction people, they're not looking for flat, you know, lighting like that, they're just cascading lighting for work sites and stuff like that.
Right.
And so if I find somebody shooting the beam into the air, it's for advertising purposes only, there's a little bit more.
But we are gonna have the, um, engine two there with this, um, light.
Light towers, so we can have.
This light tower. So, you know, there will be lighting there for people as they come and.
Is that gonna be enough?
He said he can light up a football field with that truck.
And there's gonna be another truck going too. What we're planning on doing is leading, people might not realize where this pit is, so we're thinking of having a miniature parade, everybody meets at the, huh, school, and then the fire truck would lead it of cars to the fire pit.
Onto the.
And, and there, so possibly, there will be another fire truck there that might be, be able to be used for illumination.
Just a suggestion.
What's that?
As simple as you can keep it, the better it might go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great plan.
Yeah.
But let's keep it simple for the people.
Right, right.
Like I say, we can make some signage and town pit, boom, this way.
Yeah.
Like I say, keep it simple, keep it stupid.
Yeah, it's on Smoke Street, figure it out.
That's a tricky term in the dark.
Yeah, but if you gotta sign out there with some kind of illumination.
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying it can't be done, I'm just saying it's, you can't just expect people to find it. A lot of people don't know where the same pit is.
Well, another reason why we should do it, not, not that the, um, town pit is a, uh, destination for townspeople, but, uh, yeah, at least know where it is. See what Sean and his guys are doing. I don't know what that camp is doing down there, is that nap time, or?
That's a legacy item.
Hold down the answer.
I wouldn't open the door for him.
I weren't going in it. This guy ain't spending the night there.
Maybe that's a good part of the bonfire.
We would. I would like to put something on top of the bonfire. And that camp would probably be perfect, but I think we'd have a hard time convincing Jay of that.
Yeah.
What else can I tell you guys?
If you come up with that, I think we should be able to pretty much start giving the okays on things, if you, the stuff we had.
Okay, so we talked about license plates. And Emily has drawn up some designs. Huh?
Kelly did those.
Did Kelly or Emily? I think the daughter did it.
Kelly did it. Kelly, Kemely. Both of them, no, I think Kelly came up with those, but anyhow.
So we're talking about making some license plates?
Yep.
And selling them? Lori's gonna be the point person on that, and she's very excited about doing it, so, uh.
How are you guys right now, cause on our expenditures, we saw what you guys were spending with, with the printing and all that stuff on there?
I think we're still well within fundraising.
Where's Joe?
Yeah, so we haven't even touched anything.
I checked with Betsy this morning, and she gave me a couple documents. One of them says that we have made $25,954.
Fundraising.
Money we have raised.
That's awesome.
We have expended $15,610, which gives us a reserve of over $10,000. And we haven't even touched the monies that were appropriated for us each year for $5,000 for the last nine years. That's hopefully setting the one sign for us to use when we go to it, so.
And we get a ton of merchandise, so.
Yeah.
I'll buy a t-shirt.
Figures just. Skyrocket up, so.
So, uh, money-wise, I think, uh, it looks good there. Everybody's done a great job at selling these items that we have.
There's been a lot of interest in all.
Oh, yeah.
Think I own a piece of every single article that you're selling, so I'm fine.
Well, looking forward to see a license plate on the front of your vehicle.
I'm sure there'll be one there.
I've got the ornament and the hat, but not the t-shirt.
We have two ornaments.
And I don't have the second ornament.
Oh, you got both, okay.
So yeah, so we can put those figures together, point person, I mean, we have a lot of it already here, but, um.
Great.
Okay.
Put it down, we gotta get this done, cause.
Yeah, and I mean.
Time's done for talking, it's time to do.
Exactly, exactly.
Excellent, sounds good. So when, um, should we just get this to you, and, or is you need us to come back, or just talk about it, or what do you want here?
I just.
When, when's your next meeting?
Two weeks.
We have, we have a meeting.
Next Thursday.
Yeah, next Thursday.
I'm ready, do you wanna come down?
How about, how about if you guys, uh, put together that list that we requested and come back, not the next meeting, but the one after, and then if we have that in advance,
Okay.
we can take a look at it, and if we have any questions.
Right.
Cause that'll be mid-October, right?
Yeah.
We'll be able to really start putting this down.
Yeah, exactly. But if we have it in advance, we can take a look at it, and then just ask any questions, and you guys can update us on whatever.
And email us with questions.
Absolutely.
So that, now that we, you know, you've looked at it, you got a question, boom, shoot it back to us and.
Yep, that's good.
So hopefully by the time we get in here, it's just like.
Exactly, and you can just give us the updates on.
Boom, boom, boom.
Yep. Cool.
My opinion, for what it's worth, not much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
A little disappointed, I should've made up a little name tag, I was pretty jealous those guys all had their own tags.
Next time.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Bye, guys.
Aight.
So.
I'll knock assessing out real quick.
Yep, let's go, roll right into assessing.
All right, I'll make a motion on the select board, approve the intent to cut for map 24, lot 48, and the report of cut for map 6, lot 16-1.
Second, man. Motion and second, all in favor? Unanimous? All right, we didn't, uh, we weren't, we didn't meet on 9/6, so we have payroll from 9/7 and, uh,
Yep.
to do.
All right, I'll make a motion on the select board, approve the accounts payable manifest from September 6, 2021, and the payroll manifest from September 7, 2021.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor? Unanimous? All right, general business.
Road.
Road maintenance.
Sean's here.
Yep.
Come on down.
All right, so I won't reread you my whole memo, but generally what, where do we find ourselves right now? Uh, trying to, um, swallow our new, you know, eight miles of roads, um, and, uh, we think we have some sense of what people wanna see done, on which kinds of roads in town. People kinda say, well, just do what we've always done, and yeah, that doesn't really work anymore. It, um, it's probably not the best way to maintain roads, um, and, uh, it's, uh, it's, it's gonna turn into a, a budget squeeze for us, uh, pretty quickly. You have, Sean's dealing with decisions, that are bigger numbers than we are accustomed to for, um, you know, problems that crop up. Their, their instinct is to go fix a problem so you don't ever have to go back there again. And, you know, do it once, uh, and particularly with the roads that we've just accepted, that, um, that doesn't work. We, we need to do more work than we typically would, uh, even for our, our long-time gravel roads. And there, there's liability risks that, that we've kind of had 300 years to absorb with a lot of our other roads, and with these new roads, they're, they're new, and, uh, in some cases, brand new to us. In places that we've never worked before, so. Good examples of that, we, we gave you one example that we have kind of a short-term decision need on, um, and that's Highland Ave, and you've, you've heard about that, we, we told you about that in July, and, um, there's gonna be more like those, um, and we need, we need, he needs a way to know, um, where to apply the resources that we have. We can't fix everything all at once, um, we've gotta, um, we gotta find a way to tell him what to do without having him to, I would think, this is up to you, without coming back to you every time he needs to fix something. Uh, you want him to have a framework to work, work in. So we put together a framework that might work for you, um, as a way to move forward on that question. There's probably other ways to do it, but, uh, he, he needs some more guidance on how to prioritize things, uh, and what do you wanna get to, so he knows how to build a budget for next year? And then, so those are the broad questions, and the shorter-term questions are things like Highland Ave, where, um, you know, we've got a $20,000 or $30,000 situation there.
Yeah, we got $23,000 in engineering costs, right, off the top.
Whoa, 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 before we go back, this is where I would like you to explain.
Yeah.
Because you're talking about the culvert that goes on the road in the, the spot where the road takes harder things to turn.
That goes to the lake, that's blocked. So there is, um, that drainage pipe is on private property, which we don't have a drainage easement for, it needs to be replaced. And with us to go onto the property without a drainage easement is trespassing. And we can't go to the lake, that's where the pipe goes. So we have to re-engineer what's there now.
So that it doesn't go to the lake?
So it doesn't go to the lake, in that it can discharge above the lake with it, at a minimum 25 feet away, so the sediment can settle out and not go into the lake.
So retention pond?
Yes, what we have is a catch basin, two pipes coming into the catch basin, that'll be a first settlement, which will have to have periodic maintenance done, which will be cleaning, then you'll have a settling basement, a basin where the L4 pipe is, and then the water will percolate out through the dome and go to the, uh, lake.
Uh, that was the big picture, and then the specific example, did I leave anything out of the big picture that you need to operate?
Are the roads going?
Just the, you know, what kinda guidance you need for month-to-month.
Yeah, so there's, um, what we've been doing is simply just go out there, upgrade the roads. Saks Road's a perfect example that it's just got huge craters down each side of it. Uh, it's got trees, it doesn't have any drainage swales. Like to remove some trees, create some drainage swales, put a decent crown in it, upgrade, uh, failing culverts, so that we can stop, uh, this erosion problem that happens when it rains, when we have heavy rains.
So I took the pleasure of driving both those roads this weekend.
Pardon me?
I did the pleasure of driving both of those roads this weekend. And I understand what you're saying on the sides.
Mm-hmm.
And I, again, I mean, I got passed by somebody going down that road, he was doing like 25 miles an hour, and I was like, well, I guess this road isn't that bad for people complaining about it, if people are driving like that speed on it, but I understand the concerns where you can see the washouts on the side.
Yeah, and then the backside of it's another concern, which they call the gulch.
Yeah, Cahill's Gulch.
Yeah, there's a washout there by that.
Cahill's, um, Cradius.
Yeah.
Yep, saw that.
Do you have a dollar figure in mind? What do you think that will, to bring that road up to what?
Uh, Saks Road?
Yeah.
There's about $5,000 in tree removal. Most of the ditch work and things of that nature, we can do in-house, be the gravel cost and the, uh, day-to-day operation out there.
Just a ballpark figure for that?
For us, including pricing out our equipment to do it, $3,000.
Okay. And what else? Is like engineering too? Was, did you say?
On Saks Road, there's some stuff that needs to be looked at, and it's in the gulch, because there's no culvert there. You have water backed up on one side, you have, uh.
So how many culverts are on that road?
The culverts on that road are in the beginning of the road, as you first come in past the new house it's built. There's one, two, there's three of them in that area right there that need to be upgraded.
All three?
Yes.
Roughly, how much would that be?
Uh, I gotta.
Just, just the ballpark.
Wait, those three are functioning correctly, right now, they just need to be upgraded, correct?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
They need to be upgraded in size, because they are full of dirt and they are rotting, cause they are metal pipes. $4,000 in pipe.
Okay. Is there a bridge on that road too?
No.
No?
Big culvert.
It's called the gulch.
Oh, that's the gulch, okay. Does that need to be?
There's some history that there's vehicles buried in there. And that was.
Oh, this is getting better.
Ken Saks, so it made me aware of that.
Buried in a place where we're responsible for them?
Yes.
Yep.
And again, that's the definition of as-is, just in case anybody's unclear.
Sure.
And for the record, this is also the road maintenance that the road owners should've been doing before it came to this.
That property's been owned by Saks for over 60-something years. Warner Saks was our building inspector back in the day. And he's the probably the one that stuck the thing in there in order to, to fill in the gap for his gulch, to make his road go over. Not the residents on the road.
That, but he's dead now, so we can't go back and tell him that he did it wrong, cause hell, he's dead.
That's how the water travels from one side to the other, it just weeds through the metal that's in the ground through that gulch there.
Yeah, there's a big, there's a big, like, almost like cement dam or granite dam that's up there in the back.
It seeps out of the side, I can, was in there and seen the metal and things.
But, some work needs to be done there.
Some work needs to be done there.
But if we're gonna do the work there, we may as well do it right, and remo-
But if we're gonna do the work there, we may as well do it right and remove those cars.
That part there will be an engineering cost. Because that will be a culvert installation that will need to be done, and that's gonna directly dump into that lake.
Or we don't...
We're gonna need to be a guard rail there.
Well, there is somewhat, a shitty rail there, but it's a wooden rail that's put up there.
Yeah.
Or we don't do anything.
Or we don't, that's why we're here to talk about this.
Right. There's always the option of, of not doing anything and them being accepted the way they are. What's the liability on the town?
Uh, our liability is essentially if there's a safety deficiency that we're made aware of, we have to have, uh, we have to respond to that, we have to have a plan for how we're gonna fix it. We don't have to fix a lot of things. And part of, part of what the, the kind of framework that I threw together was to allow you to say, it's okay if people have to drive five miles an hour to use the road, that, you know, that, that's one solution is that, you know, which you spoke to, that you don't want people driving fast. That is a, that is a viable solution with, you know, that we can contain our liability slightly. It sets them up for, uh, a lot of Band-Aid work. Now, you're, you're, you're seeing the same thing over and over again, you can go out and address a short-term problem relatively quickly and you can, you know, meet your responsibility of addressing a, a liability that presents itself after a big weather event or whatever, something fails, you deal with it and you Band-Aid it. That's a, that is a choice, you have that choice to do that. It, um, it guarantees that you keep going back and doing those things and that, that's okay, they don't, you know, they don't all of a sudden turn into a big expense like a, like a big repair can. So you can meet your, you can meet that liability test day-to-day, by doing those Band-Aid kind of things.
So the Band-Aid stuff, we could basically, instead of calling it a Band-Aid, you could actually call it just road maintenance?
Yes, but...
It just, it sounds better than saying Band-Aid, you know?
Well, when it's, when it's, when it's, when it's a recurring, solvable thing as opposed to like, uh, grading, grading is maintenance, that, you know, the, the normal wear and tear creates a need to overlay an asphalt road or recreate a gravel road, um, I would, I'd play semantic games about it, but it's, um, th- those are choices that you have, and we just need a framework to tell him, you know, when do you, when do you want to deal with these things? And the other liability thing that you have to remember is that when we tinker with drainage, when we, when we do ditch work, if we create ditches that these roads need, that don't exist, that's where our liability to, uh, to abutting landowners gets particularly acute. We can't just send the water into somebody's yard to get it off the road, um, even if it's downhill from the road.
Okay, but what about like a road like Bardary where you come in and it's like swamp on either side for the first quarter-mile? I mean, does that fall into that category?
If there's, if there's property damage that, you know, results from work that we do, then, then we have a liability there. Doesn't mean you can't change things, doesn't mean you can't put in ditches, and it doesn't mean that you can't create, you know, solve problems. It's the changing of things that, uh, you know, some things that, that are, that have been that way for a very long time and they've worked and the, like, pick a, pick a spot in town where there's, uh, you know, people have made their own solutions to keep their water out of their yard or out of their basement as it flows off the road toward the lake. That's a pretty common thing, particularly on these, on these roads that have never had, you know, professional maintenance.
Someone Highland Ave did that, he...
Yeah, right, that's a great example.
He took, because he got flooded out, he went out there with his tractor and he lowered that road six inches. We have to fill it in before winter because there's ruts there, but, and, and burns, but he had to lower it in, in July because the water was just rushing down his driveway and into his garage.
And that was a town road then?
Yep.
That, that kind of thing was, is just a way of life around the lake, you, you live it, you, you know that people just have made do and they've figured it out, they've channeled water in places. Beachhead is a classic example of, you know, people have engineered it themselves. They've, they've figured it out, a way to protect their property from all that stuff. Not necessarily in the best interest of the road, but whatever.
And that's proving the case now because that, that road's all washed out and that's because you've got a driveway that's so high that's kicking the water all out. The road needs to come up quite a bit, and then the other side, the road is sitting on just a huge piece of ledge. And it's showing now.
If we send him in and say, get the water off the road so it doesn't wash out the road, he's gotta put it somewhere, if he puts it in somebody's yard, there's your liability, right? Okay, I just, I'm just trying to frame that liability question for you. We have the short-term day-to-day, hey, there's a tree across the road, you gotta go deal with it, with the, that bigger structural liability.
It's either that or you create a, an interconnected ditch system so long with so many driveway culverts and it just becomes prohibitively expensive.
Right, and then that has to hit someplace because inevitably it's gonna end up in the lake. And so you're gonna have to create some sort of settling basins given these raw gravel roads so you can settle out the sediment so it isn't in the lake.
Right. Well, I've looked over your, your framework, and I'm not familiar with all the roads and the different categories, but with the ones, you know, based on the ones I am familiar with, I think it's pretty reasonable. I think it's practical, it's a good starting point until we get more definitive plans in place.
I do too, I will admit though that I didn't get to look at it till today, so I do want just another day or two to look at it a little more closely. But, but just from a, um, kind of a, an approach overall, Sean, it seems to me like, even though everybody has said the town roads, all people want is for them to stay the way they are, they're not asking for anything different or anything like that. It seems to me that that's gonna change pretty quickly. And, and, in, like, within a couple of years, all of a sudden, people are gonna be saying, no, it's a town road. Why isn't my road treated the same way as everybody else's, right? That's just the nature of people. But I also think in the interest of your department and how you use your resources, it doesn't make sense to have to go out four or five times to just keep it at a level that's ineffective. And so, you know, what I'm wondering is, you know, if, if you have a priority, uh, you know where the worst spots are, what needs to be addressed, why can't we treat it as like a capital improvement plan? And say, okay, we know it's gonna cost money, it's gonna cost money, right? It's gonna cost money, they're town roads now, it's gonna cost money. So how do we plan that out so that it's spread out? And it won't take us eight years, right? But how do we address it so that we're doing it right and managing the burden on his department? That's, do you?
Yeah, I agree, and one more thing to that is that if we can fortify these, uh, roads up, get some drainage ditches in them and so that they can handle multiple rain events, that we don't have to drop everything from what we've got going on and go out and take care of this. Because right now, what happens, it's happened in July, we were in on, you know, came Friday night, we're in here Saturday and Sunday getting the roads back up to be possible and stuff, but it takes away from us continuing to do what we were doing, getting ready for the asphalt, uh, the new pavement of roads and things of that nature, because it takes quite a bit of time to go back out there and dress all these roads back up again.
Yep.
Yeah, you're putting out fires rather than...
Exactly.
The things that you had planned on.
Analogy, we're putting out a fire.
And he's on the right, you know, he's taking the right approach because the roads are way better than they've ever been. Right, with all the rain that we've had, the roads are way better.
I knew this was gonna end up happening, it's gonna cost a lot of money for these roads. So let's try to be conveyed during all this, and you don't know what we're inheriting, and sure enough, we're starting to realize what that apple, bad apple is. Cars being buried and all that stuff, I mean, just, just...
Well, we can prevent that by having standards for roads before they get really accepted.
Really?
Sorry, I went there.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
I don't think standards is gonna fix what's already there.
No, it's not, totally not.
So it'll help protect us from other cars that are buried out there that we don't know about yet, that we don't own yet.
Yeah, that's Chris said, I mean, they've started with Highland, we found out about the water lines and now the car and stuff, so there's things that are gonna come up like that.
On Highland, can we use any of that money?
ARPA?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna be able to use, uh, ARPA money to do a lot of stormwater-related stuff. We're just starting to hammer that out with engineers in terms of how we, um, how we describe it as well as how we design it, uh, so that it qualifies, there's a couple of...
Interesting.
You know, if you can improve water quality, you can use ARPA money for stormwater, so, our, the first place we thought of that was the Kelsey Road Culvert, which, uh, is one of our bigger dollar obstacles right now. It's already narrowed, right, but we've already lost some functionality there. That's a good prospect for ARPA money.
If we do work on that, are we gonna, is there a way of straightening that road out a little bit so we're not...
That's part of the plan.
Part of it, that's part of the plan. Okay.
Uh, we did learn, I think I wrote to you, I did write to you this week, um, that's not gonna be eligible for state bridge aid. So we're on our own with Kelsey. That points to the same answer for Cooper Hill.
Right, Cooper Hill.
Cooper Hill's another one that's on the horizon for us.
And Berry Road?
And Berry is, yeah, probably, I don't know, you, you put those in order, uh, yeah, Berry'd be, uh, Berry'd be last of those three, but, um, still, it still looms, you know, somewhere out there on the horizon.
And then, of course, we got more money coming next year.
Yeah, we're gonna have, uh, you know, high fours, uh, four hundred thousands, um, that we can apply to stormwater work if you, if that's how you wanna use that money.
And I do still wanna carve out a section for all stipends for town employees.
All right, let's, let's pick that up when we do financials next time, but, um, at any rate, uh, we'll, the, the, the Kelsey Road project alone will burn through four hundred thousand dollars and other thing.
To do the job?
Yeah.
Seven fifty to eight hundred.
So, there you go.
And then Cooper Hill Road...
For Kelsey Road, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So ARPA's not gonna solve our...
A lot of money for a road that doesn't get traveled that often, but it's good. Something we have to pay for.
Yeah, that's, well, if you wanna, if you wanna keep the road, yeah, if you wanna, you wanna use the road, that's...
Kind of just like all those new, new roads.
So...
Speaking of storm... What, are we putting a bridge there? We're gonna be putting a bridge there?
Yeah, it's, uh, it would be a culvert.
Okay.
Big one.
That's seven hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Three-quarters of a mill. And yet, we didn't, we didn't wanna spend eight hundred thousand to finish Ledge Farm Road. We don't have a choice, I get it, right? No, just pointing it out, that's all. But we're gonna spend seven hundred and fifty thousand on that.
Okay.
We can close the road. No, I'm just drawing comparisons, that's all.
Sure.
So speaking of stormwater, did, did the...
Well, that, just, sorry, but that's the decisions of the board. So we shouldn't be looking at anybody else like they made bad decisions because those are the decisions that the board makes, right?
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's all right, uh, the stormwater asset management grant, did that pass at the election, did we?
It did, the work's underway.
It did, okay. Is any of that work, uh, can it contribute to these efforts that we're talking about? Like with Sacks or, you know, any of these other roads that need drainage work?
It won't do work.
No, no, but planning or survey or...
Yes, I think, uh, it looks like we will be able to add the newly-accepted roads to the work of the surveying and the, the inventory. It, the, a big part of that asset management program is an inventory and location, locating all these assets and, and quantifying their condition. We will capture a lot of that, a lot of our new roads as well as our old roads, um, through that process. So it will become a good, uh, baseline of data.
Yeah.
And would inform a longer-term plan. You, is that a good way to say that?
Yes.
You've lived through that process, I have.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I would need a couple more days on this, just as Donna pointed out too. Um, I've kind of, kind of perused through it, but I need to digest this a little bit more.
You have any guidance for us on Highland?
See if we can use the... Oh, we're gonna need catch basin and all that, I mean, where are we gonna put that?
Catch basin, we'll go and replace the existing structure that's failed and...
Do we have a place for retaining pond?
We're going to have that engineered out once the survey is completed, and then we'll have a design.
Are we taking property for that, I mean, how does that?
We're gonna have to get the easement from the property owner.
Okay.
It's a wooded area that's non, that's not a buildable lot.
Does that have access to their beach?
No.
No, okay.
It's, it's, it's thickly wooded and brush.
Okay.
That's on the side of the lake.
So we're gonna have to clear an area out?
Yes.
So basically, all you're asking for is that, well, not all, but what you're asking for relative to that right now is approval for twenty-three thousand for the engineering fees?
That and, yes.
There's no other expenses?
Engineering only.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
And Sean, that's the, that, when you look at everything right now, that's the biggest priority, the biggest trouble point, the, the one that needs to be addressed the most?
Yes, I need to take care of this first, I would prioritize Sacks Road being second.
Okay. And if the...
You're recommending that be done before winter?
I'd like to see Sacks Road in Highland done before winter. Uh, just part, I wouldn't be, I, I, the gulch part is a whole different story, but at least take care of the drainage swales and the trees that need to come down and the areas that you saw and you drive through.
Okay. Highland's, the, the, the long-term liability question, the, the, you know, tinker with the drainage, you, you risk, uh,
Yeah.
Right? Highland is a little different in that we're, there's an existing infrastructure there that we're working on. You know, we're, we're, we're repairing assets that are there already and making them work better. We're really not talking about dramatic changes in the, in the path of the, of the water, so the liability path is much clearer on Highland than it is for a lot of these other things.
Who was worried about getting sued by?
Any, uh, butters. Anybody negatively impacted by the new path of the water is the...
But if the path of the water was the same...
Then it's, it's much simpler, much less to worry about, that's, and that's the case in Highland. For, for, for two reasons. One is that we're probably not gonna change the path of the water dramatically, we're just gonna make it work better.
We're gonna shorten and we're gonna lengthen the, uh, the, the discharge length of it because right now, that existing pipe, though it's failed, is in the lake. We're gonna pull it back so it discharges twenty-five feet behind the, uh, the new structure so that it has time to filter through the vegetation to, to the lake.
I'm gonna have to go look at that.
Okay. And, uh...
And that will also, that will change the permitting process and lessen the, uh, the, uh, the rules, make it easier.
Right, so the, the, shortening the pipe, getting, pulling away from the lake...
Yep, yep.
Ends up making the permitting possible.
Yeah.
And cheaper.
Cheaper.
Right?
Okay. So did, um, did you say, Sean, that we wanna do the engineering, wanna do the engineering, but based on what you assume that work is gonna have to be, that that's work that we can do ourselves mostly? Okay.
I mean, we'll have the, the trees removed because the trees will rub through the, uh, the communication line and stuff.
Yep.
Most of the stuff with the trees that are, we'll get in and well open it up, we'll put the catch basin in, the new pipes, fix the swales and, and put the, uh, settling basin in.
Yep, and we have the money for this?
Yeah, I think we, for the, for the construction side, I think we probably do.
But for the engineering fees?
Engi, yeah, we, uh-huh, well, we're gonna, we're gonna be probably coming back and grabbing ARPA money for this, which...
Okay.
Um, we'll, we'll capture that all at once.
Okay.
Um, but this is so clearly eligible for ARPA, I think you're gonna choose to do that, just...
Okay.
We'll figure it out either way, we can, we can get through the year doing it. We may pick it from a different pocket, but...
So you, you, you need a motion for the...
Uh, no, I think, um, no, I think you see where we're coming from, you wanna, you wanna vote on it? Sure, great, um, we, we're just trying to give you a sense of what he's dealing with and the decisions that you've got coming and the, and the framework that we're gonna need to, to function, uh...
Yep.
Going forward.
It sounds to me that we should make provisions in the budget for the next budget.
Well, that's where we kind of need, almost like that CIP plan for the roads, right? Um, I support going forward with the engineering for Highland. And I, Sean, I, you know, I, I believe I'm okay with what you've laid out here for general guidelines, I just wanna look at it through most of it one more time, that's all.
Same here, I'd like to look at it, but, I mean, again, I just briefly went through it, I mean, it looks pretty good to me, but just need a day or so.
Do you wanna, uh... Do you wanna, uh, I'll bring it up again. When you, you know, if we wanna turn it into a policy, one, one of the things that we need to, we need to be able to do, that he needs to be able to do, is quite honestly, is respond to residents.
Yep.
When they call and say, hey, this is a town road, why?
Yep.
Um, and he's gotta have something that he can lean on. So it's, it's gonna turn into a policy statement of some sort.
Correct.
From you. That's where we, that's where we need to end up. We don't need to do that today, but we need to get there.
That's, that's why I just wanted to get that.
Yeah. So put that back on an agenda.
Yes, please, yes.
And we will proceed with engineering for Highland. Without your objection. Sean, do we need anything else, short-term, from them?
Uh, not at the top of my head.
Anything else you wanna cover about everything else you've been doing?
Yeah, can you tell us, like, this is, I don't know what the heck you're doing in town.
Well, uh, tomorrow we'll be paving Mitchell Road and that will be done and the cemetery will be done, uh...
The, this, the other company's paving the road?
Yeah, Brock's Industries.
Right, they're paving the road, okay.
Yeah. So that'll be done tomorrow, uh, cemetery will be done tomorrow. We are going out...
So what do you, the, when they're paving the road, and again, this is just, I'm not trying, I mean, I can talk to them private about it, I don't care whatever way, but, you know, when they're paving the road, what are you guys doing?
We're grading roads, putting culverts in.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. I mean, I don't care about the pad. I'm asking what you guys are doing tomorrow.
What we did to Mitchell Road is we replaced, oh my God, probably ten different culverts on Mitchell Road. Mitchell Road, all their culverts failed. We did all that this, this summer and got that all ready to go. That's what we did on Mill Pond.
Did we do any, we didn't do any engineering, we just replaced them?
We replaced the culverts, what needed to be done, existing conditions with new pipes and, uh, reditched the whole road, cut back the vegetation and, um, having them come in and pave it.
The already paved part?
It's been shimmed.
Okay.
Yes, pre-existing pavement. We're not, we're not paving anything that was not paved.
Okay. So we're preforming the road so they can just come in and pave it?
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh...
We did some paving on Cooper Hill Road, Cooper Hill Road, the hill up there, I, we put drainage, uh, advanced paving, put drainage swales in up there that in July, that road, that hill, before, we head up to Nielsen, got washed out pretty bad, the pavement went on that. That's working out well. Ledge Farm Road is fixed from the July washouts. We put, put a, uh, sousway in there and, uh, some curb. We got some new culverts in over there, that's working out.
So I mean, basically, not just to throw at this point, but I'm gonna throw it out there just to make a statement about it. It doesn't matter if it's an old town road or if it's a new town road, they're all requiring maintenance.
Yes, conditions are different.
We're spending money, we're fixing everything all the time, it goes along. So even with these new roads that we acquired, they're gonna cost money just like all the old ones.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
Yeah.
Thanks. Root four property.
Shall we end the public session on, uh, something positive?
Yes, please.